Good evening and welcome to tonight's May regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening. Call this to order here at 7:00 PM. Before we approve the agenda, I need to add item seventeen A. Down at the bottom after executive session for negotiations, seventeen A resignation of a person. I think that is all the changes we have to the agenda. Motion to approve it?
I hope we approve the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Bree, to adopt the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Delegations, we have none. Moving on to the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda will consist of approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April eleventh, approval of payment of the bills, improvement of the treasurer's report, approve the clerk's report. We need to approve tract donations from numerous people. I will read those off. Leopard Pride donation for Digital Media, Abrams Ready Mix, the Booster Club, more Booster Club. That will approve all those donations. You have them on your sheet, I'll read them if we get to the motion.
I hope that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Nate, thank you. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Nate, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of: The approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Approve payment of the bills. Approve the treasurer's report. Approve the clerk's report. Approve tract donations from Billy Neechock for ten dollars, Brett and Carol Murray, a hundred dollars. Approve the Leopard Pride donation to Digital Media for three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Approve a donation from Abrams Ready Mix for sand for the long jump pits at the track. Approve the donation from LHS Booster Club for headphones for Ashley Woltings class of a hundred and fifty dollars. Approve the Booster Club donation to Miranda Watson's class of two hundred dollars. And approve the LHS Booster Club donation to Katie Patey's class of two hundred dollars. I want to thank everyone for all their generous donations to different things around our district. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Next, cybersecurity training for USD two ninety-eight board members. Mrs. White.
So, as a part of a new legislative mandate and insurance requirements, we have to go through cybersecurity training. So, anyone that has a USD two ninety-eight dot com account has to watch these modules for cybersecurity training. And when your dad, you press your kid, then we have that proof that that's done. There will be other things coming down the pipe that we have to do then get done, but this is step number one. So, if you have any questions, let me know. This is step by step. And here's five modules and we did it at our end service this last month, so it's not terrible. Little bit of time here, but if you need any help, let me come and help you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brenda on that? All right. Next, we will have MTSS up here. Lincoln Junior Senior High School from Mrs. Watson and Mrs. Patey.
What?
Lights off shit. It's total.
That works. Makes me feel a little more comfortable.
We were saying that we can talk in front of kids all day and not be nervous at all, and then we get in front of adults and it's a whole different story. Yeah.
It kind of gives us some empathy to our kids when we make them stand in front of us, so there you go. Okay.
Um, just in case if you didn't know, my name's Miranda Watson and I teach the seventh and eighth grade English. English.
Yep, and I am Katie Patey and I teach sixth grade English and multitude of other subjects.
So, thank you for having us. We're going to talk about MTSS. And we're going to talk about what it is, the breakdown of it, what we are currently doing. We're going to give you a little bit of data and also present to you our plan for next year as we move forward with this program. So, what is MTSS? MTSS is a multi-tiered system of supports. So, as we know, even through our own experience, we all have our own strengths and struggles when it comes to academics. For example, I'm an English person, so that would be my strength. Math would probably be somewhere where I'm not as strong. And so, those kids have those same things. So, like where, so how do we help those kids that do struggle? So, as you can see, there are three tiers. So, based on the kids' need, on each kid's need, they are placed in each tier. So, tier one, and based on the instruction that they will need to close those learning gaps. So, tier one would be the instruction that all students get. And if they are, if kids are placed in tier one, that means they're performing on grade level, they're on track to where they need to be. Tier two, kids are, the kids where they struggle a little bit, so they have a small gap to where they're not performing on the grade level, but they're a little bit behind, just some of those, a smaller gap. But then therefore, they are getting the tier one instruction, that's where we would give them the, in the general education classroom. And then tier two is kind of like, is extra instruction to meet their, to meet that need. And then tier three where the kids who are, are a little bit, are way, a little bit further behind. So, that would be the kids who are performing multiple grade levels behind. And that could be in reading or English or both. And they're going to need instruction at, in the general education classroom and at another time outside the general education classroom and even further education. So, um, so yeah. So, how do we, um, how do we know what their needs are? This year, we adopted a program called FastBridge, which is an online, is computer-based. And each kid takes it three times a year for reading and English. It is computer adaptive, so they, they start where the kids are and then as they answer a question, then the test modifies itself. So, what, so yeah, three times a year. And then after they test, we are able to see where those gaps are in English and reading. And FastBridge is awesome because it even gives you the intervention that they are needed at their level. And math, yes. And it provides all the interventions. And our, I don't know if I can say it, but.
Great, and I. You guys have any questions about FastBridge and that?
Yeah, oh, then there's. Yeah. And then within that, between each testing, so they'll test in the fall, they'll test in the winter, and then they'll test in the spring. Between that, when we are providing them their interventions, is very, an average of about forty-five times a week that they are, that they will need those interventions. And then throughout, maybe depending on how hard, how long they are, we're going to progress monitor, monitor them. So, every one to two weeks, we're going to test them again to see if they are progressing. So, there's a constant, um, monitoring to see if they are making any progress going forward.
You guys have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, so what we are currently doing this year, currently, Ms. Watson and I are teaching the sixth graders MTSS. Mr. Long and Mrs. White here are teaching the seventh grade MTSS. And then eighth grade is not getting MTSS this year just due to scheduling conflicts. So, for us, for the first twenty minutes every day, our kids come in and they read. And they, they do nothing else, they just come and they, and they read. The books during this time are chosen by them and are books they are interested in. And I just have to throw this in there. It is proven that students who read twenty minutes a day will be exposed to one point eight million words per year and scores in the ninetieth percentile on standardized tests. So, that is one of the biggest reasons why we want to provide that time for our kiddos every single day. Because we know that life outside, even with my kids, it's hard to sit down and read every evening. So, just as long as we can provide that in school. So, throughout this school year, we have incorporated many different instructional strategies. So, we included small group, one-on-one, and whole group. In small groups, we've been able to work with students that have similar needs. And a lot of our kiddos that we've worked with this year, we haven't really had a lot of tier three. We've been working with a lot of the tier two kids. So, if we see the vast majority of the students struggling on one concept, we normally stop and do whole group so that everybody can get that. So, I just kind of, and I'm not the best with this kind of stuff because I am, I'm not a math person. But these are just, this shows our growth throughout this year. So, this last testing, so in the spring time, we did have a slight drop with numbers the way they were in the winter. We didn't have to do a lot of one-on-one or small group. So, we did a lot of the whole group instruction. So, if you look fall, and you can see the different assessments that they take up there. So, early reading is our, I have it. Yes, so early reading is the phonemic awareness. The auto reading focuses on phonics and fluency. And then the A reading is our general reading. So, fall times, we saw for early reading, a hundred percent of our kiddos were on track. Winter time for that, a hundred percent were on track. And then springtime, a hundred, a hundred percent of our kids were on track. So, there was no intervention needed in that aspect. For auto reading, so the phonics and fluency, we started at sixty-nine percent. So, if you look at this right here, um, we started pretty low. So, a lot of our kids were not on the sixth grade level. So, winter time, we saw a huge boost in that. So, we were at ninety-one percent for phonics and fluency, and then we just, we saw a slight drop. It wasn't, I don't feel like that was huge, but eighty-six percent in the springtime. And then our A reading, you can see, we were at eighty-three at the beginning of the school year. We jumped to ninety-one and then to eighty-six. So, we kind of, we stayed pretty consistent, but this was pretty exciting for us from fall to winter time. Sorry. Thanks. That's what I'm saying here. So, and then the next slide is the math percentages. And I'll talk a little bit about this after I go over this. So, early math is our numbers. And you can see, we started a hundred percent, we kind of dropped down during the winter months. And there could, there could be some contributing factors in there, but, and then the springtime, we bumped back up to a hundred percent. CB math, which is the dark blue, that would be operations. We did see a little bit of a decline in math, to eighty-seven percent, to seventy-eight, to seventy percent. And then in AMAP, which is our general math, we went from eighty-seven to eighty-seven to ninety-one over here. So, um, but I did, one of the things we are excited to see for next year is that we will finally be able to incorporate MTSS time for high school. And we also will have more teachers who specialize in these subjects. So.
We did not intentionally not teach math. We did, but because we were the, we naturally, I guess, rotated towards the.
Video and math aspect of it, which is nobody's, but it, it'll be exciting to see what next year brings just so that we, since we're going to have more of those math teachers involved in this, so.
So, next year, moving forward, as Mrs. Patey said, that we currently are only, we only have certainly the junior high right now. For every day, fifty minutes, it is consistent except Wednesdays. So, between. Okay, no, so for next year.
Yeah, for next year.
So, for sixth grade, there's only four teachers out of the combined junior high. Next year, we will have, we will be doing sixth grade again. And then seventh and eighth grade will be split into five different teachers based on what our expertise are. For example, our science teachers have a more math core, teaching math. And math and science having really large, have a big connection. And then social studies, Mr. Tay will actually be doing.
Well, it's good he's on ELA, but less.
So, ELA, so, um, we will be doing, social study would be more for English. And then for high school, we do not currently have one, but the state does require an MTSS program that is implemented. So, for high school, the MTSS will also be on, what, fifty minutes? But will be on Wednesdays only, and then we're going to split that between twenty-five minutes in reading, twenty-five minutes in math. And it'll also depend on where their need is at as well. So, we would plan to have the math teachers who currently teach math, teaching the kids who are furthest behind since they are the most experienced and have experience in years in teaching that, then they will, um, be teaching those kids to hopefully, eventually, our goal, whole goal is to close these gaps with, with learning.
And the cool thing was even these kids that have deficits, even towards the end of the school year, the interventions that they were showing were on their grade level. So, they were just, we were just seeing deficits probably from the beginning of the school year. So, even that aspect was really exciting. But one other thing that we are going to be working on this summer is, you see on FastBridge that a lot of the interventions that they provide are kind of elementary, I hate to say that word.
Well, if they're, so if they're at an elementary level, for example, if they're working on, if their need is phonemic awareness, that is a first, second grade skill. So, if that is where they are at, then it's almost, the only thing that's provided is elementary level material. So, our goal is to not be giving kids these first grade, I mean, if that's what they need. So, more make it look like it's for them.
They'll still be getting the skills, but they'll be needing.
They'll still be getting the skills, but not as, it won't look. So, like, yes.
Okay, that's all we have, that one. So, do you guys have questions?
Thank you.
We get all the points?
We get all the points.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes.
While they're getting hooked up, our next agenda item will be an Ameritown presentation by Mrs. Z.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you guys for allowing me to come down. Of course, since I'm with them, I don't do well presenting in front of adults, but it'll be okay. Hopefully, I can talk, I was losing my voice throughout the day, so we'll make it through this. If you don't know me, I am Michaela Solmestick, I'm a fourth grade teacher. And this year, we were able to go to Ameritown, which most of you have heard about, you know about it, your kiddos went. And I loved every minute of it, loved doing all of it, so. The purpose of this is to do hands-on lessons and then different activities. It took us six weeks roughly. It does four, say four to six, but we took our social studies, science time, and we did that daily. And taught the kids on how to do interviews. They were able to elect people for their mayor and judge. They were able to create laws, they had a fun law they could make. They had to open a bank account. They were to meet business, meet a business group to set prices for their jobs, we'll get into that a little bit. And this is just an experience for the kiddos to learn how to run a business, how to support locally, how to do all of that fun things. And I thought it was kind of perfect because they kind of tied in with homework, of course, and how banks had shut down and how we might have lost a business or something like that. So, they were able to rely back to that. The biggest thing was toilet paper, of course, and how there was such a demand and how they needed it and all that stuff. So, they learned all of that. The outcome of it, they were able to learn how to write checks, which is a big thing. Some people don't write checks anymore, some people never seen it. So, it was really awesome for the kids to learn how to do all of that, keep track of their money. We had some kiddos that they went and they just spent all their money. And then they got a fine because they didn't follow the laws of the hallway, or they had to go to the hospital. And they didn't go pay, they didn't have the money to come out and pay for it. So, when they got their bank statement the following day, they're like, oh, I had it overdraft. And so, they were negative, like some kids were negative twenty-two dollars. So, it's a big item for their, like, it's a joke now, just because they don't know it's not real money. But it was pretty awesome, they're like, what can I do different in that type of stuff? Using debit cards, they are not allowed credit cards, but we did talk about credit cards. I did a lot of like lessons with them, talking about, like, I showed them my debit card versus our credit card and how it looks the exact same, like, you don't know unless you know what it is. And so, we talked about credit cards, how you don't physically have that money, but it's kind of a cushion sometimes. And they kind of thought that was cool, like, you can use it, but what happens when you don't pay it? And so, those lessons with that, they did have to take, they had to take out a loan with their businesses to start out. And they had had an interest yield on that. So, they had to pay back more than what they actually took out. So, that was another lesson that they had to learn. We had community members come in for them to do interviews, so they had to go through a live interview, which was really awesome for them to go in and do. We had them dressed up, they had questions that they had to answer. And a lot of them were really nervous, and we didn't have it until the afternoon. So, they were all worried about it all morning long. And then once they were done, they're like, oh, that was okay. But some were very nervous and, but again, it's a life skill, they need to go through it. So, then they asked us about our interviews and all of that type of stuff. And I'm real with the kids, I tell the kids what, how my interview went and what happened after and everything. So, they really liked that. You kind of go in for your job, like, they have no idea what to do. Some were bankers, some filled things. We had TV, we had the hospital, the judge, the mayor. And they learned the day before what to do. So, still going in, we learned on Tuesday, Wednesday, we went in, and they still didn't know. They kind of just kind of feel it out. But once they go into that building, it's a whole different crew. Like, it was fantastic. They went in, they followed the script on what they needed to do. And they do a fantastic job there explaining everything from start to end. And it's scripted after them as well. And then lessons about money, money, of course, and just what they need for that. They could buy little items, I teach business, like, the snack shop was very popular. Everyone wanted cookies, everyone wanted drinks, they wanted chips, all of that stuff. So, some kids bought four or five cookies. But then at two dollars a piece, they're like, oh, I don't have money for this. And so, just those life lessons. And then they had to go in, the first thing they had to do was deposit their money, write a deposit slip, all of that type of stuff. And then they could buy one item online and it didn't show up in their register, like automatically show up in the register. Or sometimes a bank didn't process it right away. So, they thought they had money, but they really didn't have money. So, just those, again, life lessons. And it's really interesting to hear the kiddos when they were doing it, because they thought they had this, but really, they didn't have that money. So, it was fun. My goals, I'm super thankful for you guys approving this. And then I'm very thankful for all of our community members that helped put this on, everybody that went. I have volunteers for the interviews, I have many volunteers that went with us. It was a long drive, it was a crazy windy drive, but again, it was awesome. I really would like to continue this program because it is a lesson for the kids. And it takes six weeks roughly, and then we did thirty minutes a day. I know a lot of schools do, really, it's fifth and sixth they do. But the fourth graders did great with it, they joined the fourth grade as their first year and then repeating that second year as fifth graders, because the fifth graders are able to learn from their mistakes. The ones that did do negative twenty-two dollars, they can learn that, oh, I shouldn't spend all my money my first grade and actually go in and have it somewhat over. And then just those fifth graders getting the fourth graders excited for it and showing them what they have to come for. Here's our volunteers, Citizens State Bank helped, the Bank of Testa, and then Mighty Mark. And then the four pictures are our interviews. We had Sheriff Florence, Florence, and then Under Sheriff Sanders. And then Bree helped, John helped, and then Laurie helped as well. And then these are all the volunteers that went that day. So, we had parents, community members and stuff. So, that was awesome. And then just more pictures of the kiddos. So, they had the container shops, they built birdhouses, the newspapers, so they actually wrote a newspaper. And they had to have deadlines, and they had to have their newspaper done by, for before lunch so they could sell it after. Snack shop, off right hand corner is our city hall. So, we had our mayor, judge, mailman, and police officer. And then each shop had one volunteer firefighter. And then we had our bank, and then the hospital, we had a doctor, and then our assistant. And then the next one, just more pictures, then the DJ station. And they put music over the speakers, they had jokes going out throughout the day. Our TV station, snack shop again. And then our police officer, I'm pretty sure he went in for maybe five or something, I don't remember, but they came out with a broken leg. So, they could go in for some things and they come out with a complete, whatever they drew, so it was pretty cool. And then we had a technician that went around and would fix things, like if the air conditioner was broke, they would fix it. If they had to replace an outlet or something like that, so. And then questions and anything about Ameritown?
There were lots of good things about it, it was good.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have, I have eight on your agenda, facilities use policy. If you look in the back of your packet, you should have addendum one and two. This is what we got back from Mr. Cunningham. Tried to put together everything that we wanted. If you'll look, I think addendum one includes the weight room, the gym and the weight room and the locker facilities. And then addendum two just has the gym and the locker rooms. So, there was. There was discussion last time about whether we wanted to keep the weight room or do away with it because of the risk of weights and lifting weights. And the first, the first draft we got back from David included the weight room. So, we just had him send another one without it. I thought if anyone had any change of thought or whatever, we would have a copy of each depending on what we wanted to approve. I don't know if you all had a chance to look it over. One of the things that I saw, number eleven on the rules, improper behavior will result in one warning. A meeting or some such with the infraction, or I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but. infraction, or I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but you will have, it won't be just, if we find you on the camera, you're done. There will be a warning and you'll get reprimanded, you might say. And then your next one, you will lose your card.
Did you lose the card for a year?
Yes. And I think that was probably something that we could add or decide whether we want that to be one year from the infraction, probably. Because it's basically depending on when you get your card. If you were a month away, you might be more likely to infraction it, and then by one month, I can get a card back. So. If we need to add that, we can, then it will be a year from then.
One thing, when I was looking through it, it says the membership cost is a hundred dollars per school year. Do we need to specify as like a family membership thing, or is that a hundred dollars per individual? Or is there, it'll be like a family, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I think it would be, we could probably put per card, per school year, because if you purchase a card, that would give your family. There was a little discussion last time. I know I had brought up whether we wanted anything to be refundable or whether we want that to just be a flat hundred dollars. I think the way this reads, it's a flat hundred dollars and each year you pay another hundred. Just so we're all clear on that.
I know we sat on the hundred dollar fee. I know we had a lot of discussion last month about, there was a lot of numbers thrown out there.
What numbers did we talk about last night? I mean, I know that my group was thrown out, but I think we were kind of thinking around some other figures.
What is it now, ten per card?
Right now it's a one-time you pay the ten dollars.
If you were to go anywhere and try and get a membership to have access to a facility like that, you would pay anywhere from twenty to thirty dollars a month. And that would be way exceeding that hundred dollar figure.
I do agree with that, but I think at the same time, you know, the whole purpose of having our facilities open to the public is to entice, you know, our student athletes and families and whoever to go in and use them. And at what point have you made it unattainable?
I guess I'd say there's a privilege that we have to have.
Correct, right. There is a lot of expense there, but, you know, if you have a hundred dollars a year for a family who really can't afford that at all, and they have to choose between, you know, something else that their kids want or need, or make the decision to pay a hundred dollars for the card, you know, are we hurting the community more than what we can?
How many cards do we currently have?
Out, I'm not sure.
But just, is there like a gas, like twenty cards a year or something like that?
There's, well, there's only those cards cost us eight something a card.
So I mean, right now it's a one-time fee. I mean, it's going to be something that would be recurring each and every year. So I mean, no matter what you bump into, it's going to come out ahead of what we're currently doing.
If we're making a, like, was, make it worse, so that it was, you know, people are like, okay, I have paid this much money, I'm not going to tear stuff up, I'm not going to let my kids tear stuff up.
Right.
Or was it maybe, was it actually we're taking a hundred dollars per card, not per year? Maybe that's what we were actually talking, was a hundred dollars per card, not per year, because you can keep the same card.
Correct.
Or was that maybe what we were actually?
Kind of the section of per year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't, your fifty dollars probably isn't, that's probably a valid thought because it is a recurring yearly thing, whereas the ten dollars was, is a one-time, a one-time fee. So.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, we've increased it, we're going to do it yearly. You know, I don't think we have to make the huge jump. We're going to be more strict with the enforcement of the policy. I mean, if you mess up, you're, you're done. I think if, you know, if it shows that we need to increase, that's something that could be looked at at any point and increased. You know.
Which includes.
Yes. Next year. It's just, it's one of those things, when you make a big jump like that, you know, it could be tough. And, you know, you do want people to be active and engaged and obviously you don't want anything destroyed. You don't want it, you know, minimize liability. And I don't know if that's where the weight room part comes in. I don't know if there's a different cost to have access to the weight room. That's an additional fee with your card, if you have to pay extra to get weight room access. I mean, I know we're not a, we're not a gym, we're not a spa, you know, but we're not in the business of operating anything like that. But I don't know if that's something that can be thought about as well. Or if the motion's going to be to just gym only. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways you can approach this.
The weight room portion may not become as big of a thing because at some point Kelly Gorley will have her, her gym opened up here downtown, and a big portion of that will be a weight room. So that might fill some of that need. I think what our need is in our community is truly to have access to the gym and be able to go in there and work out, especially in the winter when there's nowhere else to go. And be able to go in there and play basketball. And then you won't be able to go to Kelly's fitness center to be able to do that. So that's a, that's a need that I think we, that's important that we try to work with the community and meet. But I also don't want to outprice us either. Seems like a big jump, jump to go from a one-time ten dollars and you never have to pay anything again to a hundred dollars per year. I don't know that I fully understood that that's what we were looking at.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree. I'm not completely comfortable with a hundred dollars per year. I do think we need to do something different. I don't think paying ten dollars one time eight years ago and never paying it again unless you lose your card is the direction we want to go. And I think having an annual fee does make the most sense. We are really confused with those costs, you know, the cost of the heating, the cost of extra janitorial services. But maybe not at the detriment of having people actually use the facility.
Maybe another fifty dollars for the weight room card, maybe that's a stacked thing. I, I think some of our discussion last time was if someone was coming in by themselves and using the weight room by themselves, that was dangerous. But after reading through this, you'll lose your card if you're in the weight room by yourself. So basically you should have a parent there, you should have somebody there. So I don't know that the, some of my worry about kids being alone in there, this puts so-called teeth into our policy so that if someone's found in that weight room alone, we'll have a meeting with them and say, if you're in there by yourself again, you're going to lose your card.
But what if they're in there by themselves and something happens to them and they're injured?
Well, that is, I think that is on here that you release all.
Yeah, but still, if they're in there and they can't get help.
There's still alarms.
Yes.
Well, we have.
That was, we have. So that was the.
And if we didn't do that, I could see.
And I know, it was discussed last time, there was concern of the doors being propped open and left open and unlocked. And I don't know, there's not another that can go off if it's, you know, a jar. So I don't know how to mediate that.
Well, I'd like to see it's just not open to the weight room.
I think Bree has a very valid point that once Kelly Gorley gets her facility open downtown, we'll have a lot more people moving, or they'll have the option to move that direction anyhow. We just don't have a public suite that's indoors. Do you advise that?
I'll, I'll agree with that. And I think fifty dollars, does that sound like a reasonable compromise?
I think fifty dollars is, is probably something that I'd be more comfortable with. Yeah.
Especially with the annual, like, certain amount I have my head in, so.
Yeah, just for the gym, locker, you know, for your, for your.
So if you had two.
Yes, addendum two, I think is what everyone was sort of after.
Yeah.
Yes, and Jason and I talked a little this morning when we were in school. And Nate or Nikki might be able to speak to this, but we would come in at six-thirty or so and lift weights before school. And I don't know, is that an option anymore, or the, is that because there was a, was somebody in the building then, or?
Yeah, they used to have zero hour for weights and a staff member would run it, but.
Somebody would come in and run it. Okay. I was just curious how it worked. And I knew that we would come in and do that and then eat breakfast and go class. So whether that was.
The weights are.
They probably didn't fit it in your schedule, would be my guess.
I don't think so. During football season or whatever, we just came in and.
Yeah, everyone would come in early.
Well nowadays it's in the schedule.
I would just like to say we've had some feedback on our livestream, people can't hear. And I know nobody likes microphones, but if you would do the sitting chamber, pull it to you to speak and push it away, everybody would be able to maybe hear a little bit better.
You all want to be heard, I know you do. So, okay, to clarify where we've been, we're looking at addendum two. It's kind of what it sounds like we are looking at, the gym and the locker facilities only. Membership cost of fifty dollars per card per year. Non-refundable. Membership will be revoked for violating rules and regulations. Any other?
For one year from infraction.
Yes, and one year from infraction. Add it somewhere in that line.
November.
Yeah, yeah, that down there. Okay. If you want to see anything else throughout that they. Okay.
I would reluctantly accept a facility use policy with the changes discussed, addendum two.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we want to put in a time that we will start allowing cards or start? Do you see a timeline that this would happen?
Can we wait till the school year is over?
Yes.
June. Pick a time in June, we've got to get through these last days.
Well, do we have any time when school access is restricted in June?
I, we use gym pretty much all day. Until at least one, I would say that it needs to be off. And then they'll, they're redoing the gym floor, I would say the end of June. They're very scheduled and not.
I was also sorry about that. That's kind of what I was getting at, is there a time when like this happens?
Oh, yeah. Cause they'll have weights and then they have summer workouts after that. And I would say until lunch or one o'clock, it's, it's in use.
According to this, it is.
It is evening hours, seven p.m. to ten p.m. when they. But I just said, like, if we want to wait until after the floors are redone, that gives everybody kind of a break, you can work on.
It's a good reset.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, just so people don't come and go off within two days because we approved this. So.
Well, don't quote me on this. Do you know when the schedule is? Is it the end of June or end of July?
It's on my calendar.
Yeah, I can't remember. It's on my calendar too. I want to say the end of June.
But whatever it is, we're just closer.
Oh, there's also buffer week somewhere in there.
The fourth of July week is a week.
Somewhere in that time frame.
A date will be announced at our July meeting as to when facilities will be.
June.
June meeting, okay. Let's see if we can have a date by our June meeting. If not.
If not, is it July?
Okay. Ah, because I went on, we had a, did I have a motion?
I have a motion.
By you?
Yes. Maybe one of them.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Nina, that the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approved the facilities use policy with amendments in addendum two. Any other discussion? All in favor? Close? Seven out. Moving on, see number nine, band instrument discussion.
So Ms. Holliday has been working very hard on this proposal. And she has typed it up for you. So we kind of came up, oh, she came up with a plan, I think it's a great plan. For our fifth and sixth grade band, we currently are required to have bands for those students, we're not required. We do require them to have bands. And with that, we usually have always given them an instrument that we've owned because we do require it as part of their curriculum. So at the, at the top there in that box, you'll see kind of what she feels we would need. So the flute, clarinet, saxophone, trumpet, and trombone are kind of your starter instruments. And so she kind of went through and said, this is kind of the number that we would need to be successful for fifth and sixth grade. On the right side of that is the number that we have available that the district currently owns. So the numbers look great that we own them, but a lot of them are not usable, they're broken, whatever, they're old, very, very old. And then that second box is some instruments that we should probably have. So when you go through these five instruments and you learn on them, then you kind of move over to like the flute. We play the piccolo, the French horn, baritone, tuba, those are, which you learn trumpet or trombone, you transfer to those. And then you have the saxophone, the different saxophones. Most of the time, students do not buy these instruments if they move from a traditional trumpet to something more complicated in high school. So that's why schools usually own these instruments and then they loan them to high school students to learn on. And that kind of expands your band as well. And that would be for your seventh through twelfth grade students. Down below that are some instruments that we own for some reason, but we'll never need, never use, no one will probably ever learn how to play them. So she has been in contact with Thomas Music House in Concordia. And he actually came today up to the high school and they kind of came up with a plan. And I guess where we're leading to now, he's going to present three different plans. He's, he's willing to buy our instruments that are not usable. And we need to obviously, for example, the trombones, we have nineteen and we need eight. So they would probably pick the best eight that we have, sell the rest of them, and he would give us the best price he can. And then kind of go through that and, you know, the clarinet, we have twenty, we need ten. And, and hopefully we get a decent price, but I mean, I'm not going to get excited about the price because a lot of them are, like I said, old and, and they don't work. But then with that being said, we can then start trying, coming up with some sort of plan to start replacing some of these. Because even though we have twenty clarinets, there might be one that works really well. So we really need to talk about how are we going to slowly replace these. He is going to give us kind of some scenarios. He has a lease option to replace these. He has like a buyout, what it would cost us. I don't know that that would even be feasible, to be honest, it's going to cost a lot of money. But if we could come up with some sort of like rotation is kind of what I have envisioned, kind of like we have a uniform rotation, we hopefully have curriculum rotation, things like that. We could do the same thing with band instruments. The seventh through twelfth grade band instruments, those ones that are not something that every kid's going to play, we don't need very many of them. I believe, didn't you turn in a, did you turn in a grant?
For the rotation side of, yes.
So what we were thinking for those is to kind of have a grant to the Post-Rouge Community Foundation to maybe slowly replace some of them. And just kind of do a cycle every year or two years or whatever. And Mrs. Schmidt graciously wrote us a grant for, which one did you put in, for the basic, I meant the basic clarinet. So that's kind of the plan that we have. Until he evaluates all of the instruments and goes through them, we won't kind of know the. So that's kind of the plan that we have, until he evaluates all of the instruments and goes through them, we won't kind of know the cost analysis. But I guess we need your blessing early to dispose of old equipment from that's owned by the district.
Hi, our new music teacher, he's, we're communicating with him.
Yes, yes, yeah, Ms. Holliday's in, talking to him.
Yes.
And we're still going to require those junior high school students to own their own.
Yes, so, yeah, that's it, I'm glad you brought that up. So in the past, because we've had these extra ones, we have been the rental company, but not always do they ever pay. And we should not put ourselves, in my opinion, in that position because we are not a rental company. And then the other thing that's happening is that they get broken, we send them in, we pay the bill. And we don't ever get refunded and it's, it's getting very expensive. So ideally, I will, I don't know when this stopped, but like when I was in school, after sixth grade, you bought your own instrument. I assume John, you know, that much younger than me, but, yes, you had to buy your own instrument. And I, like I said, I don't know why, when that changed, why it changed, I have no idea. We do have some parents that do provide their own instrument, we have several that do not. But we need to transition out of being a rental company, we can't afford it.
And we've had the discussion with Tom's Music House about him possibly having some sort of parental in this program.
Yeah, and he would rent the instruments to the parents that we would have to have like a night where they come in and he would sign all the contracts and let him be the guy because that's what he does for a living, not us. And, and if we could, honestly, we need to move that a little quicker than probably, before school starts. Because I will tell you, on our enrollment sheet, it has rental instrument fees on there. And we try to collect them, oh, I'm going to bring my own instrument, they don't, they use ours. Yeah, we need to either, yeah, we need to somehow figure out how to transition out of that position that we put ourselves in.
Okay. Okay, I will write the line back. Okay, we, we have a motion here, we could approve Tom's Music House to evaluate and purchase unused band equipment at appraised value. We could also add to that to have Tom's Music become, or Lincoln Junior Senior High School cease to rent instruments and look at other options for rental.
Yeah. And I'm hoping he will have something to present in June with the instruments of what value he'll give us, what we need, that kind of stuff, and, and have several options for you guys in June if we're moving forward.
So can we make a motion just to liquidate the instruments at this point and then make a motion after we hear his presentation? To have, I mean, make a motion to liquidate and stop renting equipment and then later on make a motion to find somebody else to do it.
That's kind of what.
As ready as.
That's what we have here, we approve Tom's Music House to evaluate and purchase unused band equipment at appraised value. Also, Lincoln Junior Senior High School will cease to rent instruments and explore other options. So. Sound workable to everyone? I assume that when he comes and goes through everything and we get those numbers back, we will have a rental option and we can look at that.
Yeah, because we actually could rent our own instruments, like these ones that we need for our fifth and sixth grade, we can rent them as a school, yeah. To provide for our students, and then they also have the seventh through twelfth grade rental option for those students that are in band. Or you could purchase them, so many, many options to choose from.
Did you have a motion for that or you need to?
I would need somebody to do that, I have, that's what I have written out here so that you don't have to come up with the wording.
I assume.
Okay. Motion by Jason, seconded by Gina, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve Tom's Music House to evaluate and purchase unused band equipment at appraised value. And then Lincoln Junior Senior High School will cease to rent instruments and explore other options. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. You're up again.
Oh, yep. So in the past, the past several years since Coach T's been here, they've gone to the football camp, it's a team camp at Corde State. They're no longer having that camp, I have no idea why. So he looked around for other options in, in, in the state and nothing that he felt would be quality for what they have to pay. Students pay or athletes pay for this themselves, the school doesn't pay for it. We do use our equipment to go, I, I think they have to take maybe helmets, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly, some of the pads and stuff. He did find one in, in Nebraska at the University of Kearney. And he would like, because it's out of state, he would like to have transportation to go to that. He felt that was the best thing for the kids as far as their, their pain, except several days, they provide housing, food, and then the, the full team camp.
Full bridge.
High school, I believe, only nine, twelve.
So you just see the transportation part?
Yeah.
Needs to be done.
Yeah. I don't believe we've ever approved to use the school's equipment to go to it, it's just because it's out of state, he needs approval for the transportation to go up there. They'll probably take four vans, depending on how many kids sign up. Drivers Day is that same week, so.
Do you have a date?
I do, it's June sixth, well, it's actually the Saturday before, so June five, six, seven. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, I believe. Because Drivers Day starts at June sixth, so I know that impacted a couple of dates.
And as the no fun guy, I need to tell you, I reached out to our insurance company just to, so the board was fully aware of any exposure they might have. And I'll just read what EMC sent back to me, it says, "It doesn't matter which state they travel to, once they are outside of Kansas, they will not have protection of the Kansas Tort Claims Act. Since they are not a government entity in the state they travel to, they won't benefit from that state's tort act each or either, which would limit liability. In short, they will have the same exposure as any other business or private entity when they are in another state." They did have a discussion on federal tort. We currently have a million dollar umbrella liability. We could increase that to four million to give us a total coverage of five million. But that extra four million would cost us forty-four hundred dollars a year in premium to be able to travel out of state. So I don't want to be the big naysayer, I just want the board to be fully aware that everybody travels all over the country all of the time. But I just want you to be aware of exposure, of risk that you would be assuming.
So it would be that case with any, any budget that goes out of state using district vehicles? So like even if the board has a conference in Kansas City, for instance, Kansas City deserving, it'd be the same thing when those vehicles are taken?
Or if we have kids go to FFA, something that's out of state.
Anything, that's what I'm saying, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to poo-poo any travel, I'm just saying, just everybody go into it eyes wide open that there is exposure when you leave our Kansas tort act, that, that we won't have any limits on damages.
It's why we get approval for every state activity. That's why we get approval.
Yeah, that's why we bring it to you, because what was it, who else went to Nebraska?
Wrestling East here, the Red Cloud.
Yeah, Red Cloud, that's what I was thinking about, and it would be brought up every time to, or approval to travel out of state. I'm not, like I said, I'm not poo-pooing it, you know, I'm just saying, it's my job to make you aware and protect you.
How often, I mean, aside from my sling, how often do we have any other activities that go out of state?
Mr. Wolting went to the Holocaust exhibit that was in Missouri this year.
Yeah, I would say like probably once or twice a year, our kids go to Kansas City, Missouri for something. Like I used to take the kids to the Federal Reserve Bank every year and I had to get it approved, we went across the state line.
National Journalism.
Yeah, the National Journalism, they haven't been for a while, the Band O' Week is, the World's in Fun, I saw across the state line.
I tried my hotspot and it's not working.
And that's why I say again, I'm not trying to be negative and say, don't do it, I'm just presenting information so that they're aware, yeah.
Is this just on the traveling part or the liability while they are there?
Any, any accident that would happen.
Okay, so the difference would be a football camp versus a meeting somewhere or something, there's, there's potential to have a football camp, I would assume.
Well, that's really the travel, it's not the actual camp, it's not a student blowing their knee out at the camp. This is an automobile accident.
Students are paying for the camp, so they're, they're responsible for the camp fee, so it'll be their pocket, we are providing transportation.
Just the transportation part will help.
Yes.
Okay.
If our vehicles are in an accident, then that's what opens us up.
It would, it would be a great camp and a great experience to have a multi-day dorm, team-building kind of a camp.
And we've gone to every other thing that there's ever been, I mean, we never, I don't think we were ever aware of this, but still.
Yes.
We have gone and we've never been in an incident, so now, of course, there will be, but.
Well, you'll see, draw it up.
You said that to increase our federal tort is forty-four hundred dollars a year.
To move our liability umbrella to five million total, we have a million to add another, and I believe the federal tort might be five million? Five million came in somewhere, but that would cost forty-four hundred more on our already ninety-some thousand dollar insurance premiums.
And you have to raise the whole, I mean, we couldn't just raise it one million and have it be two million?
We could.
Well, we have half a football team going, it's probably not, two million is probably not enough, but when you have four kids from FFA going, two million is probably.
Yes. Gage is fun, I asked him if we could raise it for a week and cancel.
We haven't had any issues before, so. Right, but it only takes one issue. I would say, you know, there is merit to an argument of, is it worth just increasing it and eating the cost? To know that we are protected should anything happen, at the same time, they're going to Nebraska.
Does he have any other transportation options if we?
I.
Don't know.
I don't know, I need to talk to him about it.
Okay, okay.
Parents probably.
Either the parents will take them.
Took kids to the Nebraska Kearney wrestling camp, we just transported them privately, but it didn't have football equipment to take either. Which is what I'm embarrassed.
Yeah, I was just curious whether we, if we sent two vehicles, whether it limits our amount of students that we are transporting and then any of them beyond that we can.
I don't have a problem approving this and meeting the, the insurance portion, whereas I appreciate the information, I think it's good that we're all aware of it.
Just information.
Yeah.
Motion by Bree, seconded by David, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the Lincoln High School football team attending the out-of-state football camp in Nebraska? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven no. Okay, moving on to number eleven, ECF discussion with Brenda.
The FCC came out, well, they didn't come out, but it's called the American Rescue Fund, they're seven point one seven billion dollars to support remote learning that came out through COVID. The FCC is overseeing the funds through USAC, which is the same entity that deals with the break. So those funds, they've had a couple waves, and now we're on wave three of this money, where they will provide devices or connectivity for students who would have to go remote, and sufficient, I shouldn't say, devices. We've waited a couple rounds to kind of see how it went and what kind of equipment people were asking for and how that was going. So we decided on wave three, Scott and I worked with our E-rate consultant, and we have submitted a bid for a hundred and fifty-five Chromebooks for seven through twelve, those are the ones that are at their end of life here within the next year. And so we will see if we get approval for that, they will pay for up to four hundred dollars per device. So that's why we went with the Chromebook, they will for the most part be funded, so we're just waiting to hear now. And then once we hear we got the approval, then we have to get through the process of getting the devices. Because like everything else, they're kind of backwards, so I just wanted to let you know that we did put in for a hundred and fifty-five Chromebooks.
And I would, I would like to point out just and thank Brenda because what, what most, well, not even the board is aware of what's going on all the time behind the scenes. So we scramble always to find opportunities for the district and, and Brenda's probably one of the best scramblers around to be aware of things like this. Where a hundred and fifty-five Chromebooks, over forty thousand dollars worth of technology, it's a lot like the Senator Moran thing that I'll talk about here in a second. We are constantly trying to find ways to be better and better and better without using, with using a minimal amount of budget money and preferably none at all, so I would just like to publicly thank her for, she's always got her ears open for opportunities for our district and she works a lot for this, thank you.
Thank you. We would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a hundred and fifty-five Chromebooks if ECF funding is approved.
Yeah, and I would point out, unlike some of the S R charades that are going on right now, we won't order this until we have access to the funds. And I'll let you know about getting hung up with S R in a minute, but this approval would be not only to buy them when ECF says it's okay, but when the money is ready to draw down and we have cash in hand.
I would make that motion, don't worry.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Jessica, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the purchase of a hundred and fifty-five Chromebooks for approximately forty-two thousand if ECF funding is approved? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven no.
And as part of the process, we did go through the appropriate bidding processes to get to the vendor that we submitted, just, we followed our procurement processes.
Okay, next, district vehicle review.
So this is kind of a fun segue because the reason we scramble around to find every dollar that we can that doesn't take it out of our general budget is because we still have ongoing needs in our district. So I would like to just review our vehicle fleet, our Impala vehicle number one has a hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven miles on it. Our, one of our Traversas, number fourteen, is at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six sixty-eight. The van that we take lunch back and forth when our, our meal van, which does not transport students ever, is seventy thousand, five hundred and six miles. The new white van that we bought last year, that one that had nineteen thousand miles on it when we bought it, it's up to thirty-one thousand, that's how many miles that we use, or this is just how often we use them, our other Traverse is at a hundred and three thousand, the Suburban is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-three miles, and our big blue Transit is at forty-four thousand, eight hundred. So we've got kind of a range there. We are currently transporting our preschool kids, our pre-K four in the Suburban. It is, well, you would just be amazed how difficult it is to get kids' seats in that old Suburban. It's inefficient, it's not user-friendly. And I think we need to have a plan, a forethought of not getting to a point where we need to replace three or four vehicles. I can tell you this because I've had to drive my own vehicle to places. I don't know how many times we have every vehicle out somewhere, and there is nothing available. And then, you know, teachers have to drive their own vehicle, turn in mileage. I drive my own vehicle, turn in mileage, or most of the time, we don't turn in mileage, to tell you the truth. We just drive our vehicles, which isn't fair to our teachers. But I think there needs to be a discussion. If we can continue to scramble for money for things that we need, we've got to consider looking at some vehicles. Those Transits probably would be very effective as a preschool, because it's so big and easy to walk around in. And when we get pre-K three next year, we're, I think, going to need something better than that Suburban to get everybody in and out and around. Would you agree, Mrs. Schmidt?
Absolutely.
The Suburban's a challenge.
Absolutely. If you've ever had to put a car seat in a car that doesn't, that you can't walk through, you almost have to lift the seats, and we often use that Suburban to transport other students. So then we have to take all the car seats out and put them back in daily, and it's a very difficult process and time-consuming.
Now, the Impala, I'm not worried about the Impala, as long as we can keep that rascal running. It is a perfect driver's ed vehicle. So if we can keep that going to two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand miles, that'd be great. But I would like to just get some input from the board on, you know, thoughts about shopping around and seeing if we can find Transits. Or, like I said, we bought it, that twenty-twenty white van had nineteen thousand miles on it. I found that for nineteen thousand dollars. The world has changed drastically since then, but I would just like the board to have that discussion of, when do we look at our fleet? When do we add one to it? And when do we have a vehicle that, as we move into a childcare mentality with pre-K three, with pre-K four, we'll have some different needs there.
How has the Transit been holding up?
Oh, I have, since I've been here, there have been no service issues with that big blue Transit. Prior?
No, it's been great.
Probably the most universal thing we have for activities, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah. It probably would break down now, I mean, Gina.
That Suburban, we were using that for football when I came in '05. It's had some issues since then, so.
And it gets driven every day on a preschool route, and if we take preschool funds, which we have to do to have preschool for three-year-olds and four-year-olds, we're required to transport them if they're two point five miles away. It's a requirement we have to do.
And I don't think, like, I'm sad, I don't think people realize how many vehicles go out of our building every day. It is insane. It's a shuffle regularly. I know Jane and I will have conversations, she's like, "The bus will come in, they don't have a bus for us to take. Can we take vehicles?" "No, because when do they come back?" I mean, it's like another vehicle. It just amazes me, I mean, I know we have five vehicles sitting there, but they're gone every day. It's crazy.
If you see pieces of a vehicle laying around when you're driving around that could possibly be the Suburban.
That is true.
So pick them up.
So we need to replace the Suburban and technically also get another vehicle, realistically. But they're worried the prices have gone up. I mean, you could get a lot for the Suburban if it's running, apparently, but.
Ideally, ideally, I would say yes, but I'm concerned for the littles in the preschool more than taking our own vehicles to go places, you know?
I think it's important that we attempt to transport those three- and four-year-olds who have to be in a car seat or a booster seat, I think actually a car seat still, in the most difficult possible. And asking whoever's doing the transportation to crawl over those seats in a Suburban is.
Even getting them buckled in.
Yeah.
There's nothing convenient about an old Suburban.
Is that Suburban something that could be utilized elsewhere? Like, because we added a vehicle to the fleet and didn't get rid of it? Or is it something that we should, like, getting rid of? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think. I just don't see a use for it. Or, believe it or not, our old flatbed Dodge that we plow with, it only has fifty thousand miles on it, so mechanically, it. Thank you, yeah. So it's, it's fine. I don't know what we would use it for, to tell you the truth, because it's just so inconvenient.
Right.
It would be a great vehicle to haul football equipment to the games, but I would be so worried about taking it that far out. Honestly, I wouldn't want to travel it very, would you take it very far in town?
Me?
Yeah.
I would, don't know that I'd drive around town.
I mean, like, at least our kids, if something happens, we can call, and they bring another vehicle. You're only, you know, furthest, what, twenty miles maybe? And you go to a ballgame and it's, you know, an hour and a half away, it breaks down, that just makes me nervous.
So I guess I would ask that you would let me start shopping and see what I can find, and with the intention of at least liquidating the Suburban and getting something that I would feel would be much safer and more convenient for the staff and the kids to.
Or like a transit?
Yes.
I think the kinds that's the.
Even a caravan, you can walk through the two seats and it's easier than what we have, but.
What's the seat capacity on the transit versus like a minivan?
Well, by school, we cannot, we have a limitation no matter what it is. Yeah, what are the, what's the total seat in the Transit? Seven plus one, seven plus driver? Eight plus driver?
Ten, eleven, eleven.
Ten plus one. So the caravan is?
Well, ours only has bucket seats, so it's six plus one.
Six plus one. A Transit would be perfect.
I think that.
If you can find it all, if you can find, I may have to buy, I look at it from a private individual just because of scarcity. It's kind of like school buses. Everybody wants stuff, and you can't find it.
Is it possible to transport those pre-k kids in a school bus or not? Do they still, are they still?
You could, for three-year-olds, you would probably have to have a preschool para, and that's going to almost be more expensive in labor and personnel and efficiency.
Okay, I was just a question.
Yes, you could. And the districts that I know that do that employ a preschool para to ride that bus.
Ride that bus, so. I know rules on buses are different, like car seats and other things, so I was curious, but trying to get three-year-olds to sit down is like herding cats, so. Okay, I have on here approved the purchase of two vehicles. I would say that we accept a motion to explore options to purchase two vehicles? Or one vehicle for district vehicles?
I'd move we explore the purchase of another vehicle.
Would you like to keep the Suburban or explore options to?
Not necessarily, but that can be a couple hundred or a hundred and fifty.
Okay, David moved to explore options to purchase a vehicle for the USD 298 fleet.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education approved the exploration of purchase options for a vehicle for district service. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven of them. That wrote down. Next, we have administrator reports. Mrs. Schmidt?
I just had two quick things to add, and I want to make sure I get the name of this award right. Mrs. Potacek applied and received an award for her Shifting School Culture Award for the Leopard Families Program that she instituted back in 2019. It's a social-emotional program that all staff members are involved with the family, and they get to know that family, and it's been very successful. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, it was done every week. Last year, because of COVID and the inability to intermix students, we weren't able to do it. And then this year, it's been done once a month. It's very popular with students, so I just want to publicly commend her for her work in that program, because it's been very beneficial for students. They're having a virtual awards reception, rewards, awards reception for that on May the seventeenth. So I don't know what that would quite look like, but I did want to take this opportunity to commend her for that. I also wanted to quickly talk about Starbase, because it is a wonderful program that we use for fifth grade, but I have some new board members, so I wanted just to take a minute to explain that program. Starbase is a program that doesn't cost us anything as a district. The only cost there is for us is to transport kids and to pay for the driver. It is ran by the Department of Defense. It was designed, it came to fruition back in the late nineties, and it was designed to help students get interested in STEM and also careers in the military. It is ran, right now, students are participating, I will actually go with students tomorrow. It is ran at the National Guard Base in Salina, and they very much run it like a military program. They're divided into groups. They use military lingo, and for every concept that they're introduced to, they actually, as a group, have to problem solve that. And then they also build rockets, and at the end of the program, they launch those rockets. So if you've never been, I would encourage you to ask any fifth grader about it. For most fifth graders, it's the highlight of their year. So I just want to commend the board for your continued support of that program and look forward for doing that for years to come. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Like I said last month, I have kind of throw together a state testing incentive plan that I would like for you guys to review, and I would include it in my handbook for next year. I wanted to kind of let you look it over and see what it looked like in terms. I did talk to the staff at, one of our staff, the last meeting, and they were very supportive of it. There's just not a way to encourage kids to always do their best on the state assessment. It's not like the ACT where there's something that, I don't want to say something for them, but do something for them, where the state, the state testing is, doesn't really have a lot of teeth in it for them. So this would give them, it's amazing, we have the early out for finals in what kids will go to any lengths to get that. So I think this might be something that they would work hard to be able to receive those days off.
Discussion, question? Anything else in your report that you want to hide?
No, I'll probably, unless there's any objection, I'll include this in my handbook for next year, once those come out to be approved.
Want to have any objections to that? Thank you, guys. Scott?
Well, I've got a few things, I'll try to fly through them as quick as I can. If you remember, we started talking about parking lot at the junior senior high school last year. When I got a bid for it, it was about seventy-four thousand dollars. And at our work meeting, as part of our strategic plan, we were talking about how to allocate wind farm money and different things like that. And the parking lot was brought up, and then the board approved hiring the engineer to get the specs for a new parking lot and letting out bids for that parking lot. So the engineer has done his lion's share of the work, and we put bids out a couple weeks ago, and last Friday was the deadline. So we got two bids on that. So hang on to your hats, because everything has gone up exponentially. One bid was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and ninety-four dollars and thirty cents. And keep in mind, a year ago, it was seventy-four thousand dollars. The other bid is ninety-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-four point five. So we are up twenty-four thousand dollars from last year, which the engineer evaluated these bids and said, he expected it to be higher, because he thought everything should be thirty percent higher than it was. He thought it would come in a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty. He expected the hundred and fifty-eight from the company, just because they would make it worth their time. So if you see the parking lot, it's not getting better with age. It's a tremendous expense. But if we do not repair what we currently have, we will repair more the next time this comes around. I've got an engineering paperwork specs that are probably a half to three-quarter inch thick that outlines the expectations of the job. The worst parts were the north end of the student parking and the south end of the library area, where it's just down to nothing. Those get completely cut out and replaced with concrete, so it won't be broke like asphalt. They will mill down cracks that are over a half an inch and replace asphalt. They'll seal others, they'll overseal the whole parking lot, they'll cut out and fix other potholes, and then they'll repaint all the parking stalls. As much as it hurts to say, "We need to do this," well, we need to do this. We do have that wind money, we looked at it in our strategic plan, and it can be budgeted in. It's just going to take more of a portion of that than I expected, and we'll probably have to hold off on those windows probably until next year's wind farm payment. And we'll just have to live with those windows that are gapped and falling apart.
Does the engineering on that include any of the drainage problems that we have in between the student parking lot and?
The reason that they wanted to use, the reason they wanted to use concrete is because they can angle it better into the drainage ditch that was expertly carved out by our volunteer board member. Although I will tell you, it's filled in, and we could touch it up at some point. It's amazing how quickly that goes, but that's why they want to use concrete, to have a better pitch ability, is what he told me.
It'll hold up.
It'll hold up better, yeah.
Did the engineer have any worries with the fact that one company was sixty thousand under the other one?
Absolutely.
No, they both went on the same spec sheet, and like he said, he expected the one to be higher, because they just, they're not going to peel.
Yeah.
Yeah. The company that was the low bid can start July one, and they think they can be done in thirty days, and after thirty days, they pay a penalty if they're not complete.
Is there a maintenance button with that?
No, we would have to pay somebody to come back and seal coat it. And to tell you the truth, I didn't ask them how often that should be done.
Help prevent having.
It would prevent this, that's for sure.
Any guarantees for someone?
Well, how do they guarantee contract or concrete, they guarantee you'll crack?
Well, I mean, work the law, paper.
I would have to read back through, I don't know if there's a warranty time. I will say that this engineering company that we hired has been unbelievable. They've been here probably four or five times. I've sent them aerial photographs from the drone, they've laid everything out, they've walked every crack. Every crack in that parking lot is identified on that spec sheet as to how white it is and what type of repair is going to be done. And it's just a map of spider web of everything. They, I think they've been very diligent in getting us a process to get. been very diligent in getting us a process together.
One more, does this just the two parking lots, or does it include the road that goes north and south, and then the entry from the highway into?
It's it's all the asphalt.
All the asphalt, okay.
We could have done the parking lot north of the gym, about a hundred and forty thousand more, just for that parking lot, so unfortunately, that will remain gravel, but we are getting some estimates on some lights, so that at least it will be lit come basketball season, it'll be much safer, so, it's all been approved, the bids have been approved, but the board would need to take action to accept that bid, so that we can get it scheduled or booked, or if you want to wait, we wait.
One more question, the, where the buses park, and loading and loading kids, that's all concrete, is that correct?
On the north end?
No.
In the front?
East side of the gym, between the school and the student parking lot.
Oh, no, that's just asphalt, and they'll leave the asphalt.
The only pieces that would be concrete was the the very ends where we're estimating issues.
And they'll try to make them into kind of chutes that'll?
Yes. I so move.
All, all second. Okay. Yes, David moved and Jason seconded that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the bid for ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for the redo of the parking lot at Lincoln Junior Senior High School, any other discussion?
All in favor?
Oh, good.
Sorry, just one more question, I just want to reiterate that there is back charges if they're not done within thirty days, and that's in in their bid?
It's minimal, it's like a hundred dollars a day.
What?
But it's something.
It's something, if they're not done within thirty days, yeah.
Do you have any?
Yes, I do. Sweeney's Pavement Maintenance LLC of Hays. Sweeney.
Sweeney's Pavement Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Approve Sweeney's. Sweeney's Pavement Maintenance LLC from Hays, with their bid of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents, projected to begin July first, possibly done in thirty days, they do pay back a little if it's not done in thirty days, so, uh, motion and second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven out.
Okay, the next thing is the tech building, I know we've been kind of quiet on it, but that's because everybody's been busy working on it, no time to talk, I've met with two contractors for the firewall, it is an absolute fascinating transition from a building to a school building, uh, four, four layers of five-inch fireproof sheet rock, four layers, so an inch and a quarter, and an inch and a quarter, two and a half inches of fireproof sheet rock for a two-hour firewall, uh, but I've met with contractors, we should have bids on those, hopefully by the end of this week, um, and we have to build the two bathrooms for that, but but that is ongoing, I'm over there multiple times a week, I just wanted to give you an update, we are pushing onward, we have a, uh, Salina Tech has an interview for a weld welding instructor on Thursday morning, so everybody's still moving. Oh, Friday, Friday, so we're, it's happening, we're just getting there, just a lot of hurry up and wait right now, uh, the 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 walls and things, they're saying it won't take a week if we can just get everything in and materials, one contractor has already located materials, so hopefully we won't have a supply chain issue there, we have to put in a fire system, which again is absolutely amazing in a completely open building, that we have to have strobe lights, a speaker-announced fire pull system, so when you pull it, it will say evacuate fire, evacuate fire, because you just can't yell across an open building, tell everybody it's out. It's awesome, fascinating.
Are we still foresee paper wall?
We have, yes.
Okay.
I have not changed my belief that we won't be open this fall.
As we get closer, can we possibly plan an open house at that building, so we can have all of us who haven't been over there, um, and the community into the building?
Absolutely, I'd like to get that wall built.
Right.
So they can see what it actually looks like, you know, I, you can come over anytime you want, I still have a wall to tear out from the old bathroom, I've got three, two of the walls out, and I need to tear out two more, so evenings, weekends, tool belts, boots, come on over. Senator Moran's visit, I want to give you an update on that, that was pretty exciting, we were the only school in the entire state of Kansas that he chose to support with his appropriations earmark funding, I have completed all the paperwork on that, it is a grant, but they call it a guaranteed grant, uh, so it just had to go through a twenty-three-page process to get our guaranteed grant, as soon as we get that, our teacher laptops are five years old, and I have one, and the administrators have one, and Mrs. White has one, and we don't know if we should sell them or just have a big bonfire in celebration, but they are horrid, they, am I wrong?
No.
Am I wrong? Okay, I could, I could, I I could go to the library and look at information up faster than that thing will process a Google request, so, we are going to take that money, and we are going to replace teacher laptops, and also get iPads, because again, looking at our littles, they don't do keyboards, they're touch, and so we're going to use that for teacher laptops, iPads for the younger kids, we're going to do POE switches, because I'm learning some stuff, power over ethernet, if you didn't know, because, you know, and we're going to get access points, which are like routers, Mrs. White, this is the stuff she works on all the time, uh, and and this will all, this will upgrade us with the Chromebooks to being pretty cutting-edge for the next five years, I think, what's the life on those Chromebooks, when it was seven?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, stuff? We we can get more out of it than they said, look at the Suburban, so, we get lifespan, but but that's exciting, so I wanted to let you know, all the paperwork is processed for that, another thing I want to bring up is track meets, huh? We have track meets at home, so thank you for supporting the patch job, I know it was a patch job, I know it was a Band-Aid, but you know what, we have track meets, and and I would take a moment to thank Ron and John Buttonhoff, they came over with a huge loader, and they dug out all the stickers in the long jump pit with hand shovels, not with the loaders, and then they brought, I I don't know how much sand fits in one of those monster things, but the bucket's about as big as this table and huge, but they had two buckets of sand and basically rebuilt the whole long jump pit, so it's it's things like that that just, you know, if we can have a track meet right on, people step up and they'll do things to make sure that it's a, it's a winner.
Probably would have bathrooms.
Well, and and I want to say, you know, bless our hearts, I feel bad for Deep Creek, when our bathrooms backed up, you know, they, I think I sent an email to everybody, they had accidentally bored right through our sewer line down at the corner of First Street, our our line goes south out of that building, and then goes at like a forty-five degree angle to a manhole, and they had crossed at that forty-five and and drilled through that, so, you know, they took care of it quickly for us, not that day, of course, but they had to dig up an awful lot and replace a long line, and they cleaned out our line about four hundred feet back up toward our building for us, um, I just feel bad for them, I feel bad for us that it happened, and thank goodness we didn't keep, hold the meat for an hour or two, because nothing could have been done anyway at that point, so, um, track meets, S R three, I'm going to give you an update on S R three, I'm I'm about at my wit's end, and and I've started escalating my passion, that's a good way to put it, I applied for S R three in August, and I've still not been fully approved, and I'm just, they are playing games, and they add layer upon layer of things, the 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 last discussion I had with them revolved around typing one sentence in in the application, and so I don't know what the problem is, across the board, superintendents are having troubles getting those monies, I've been told that they'll, it'll be approved this week, and we can draw down our funds in June before the end of the fiscal year, this is why I'm so passionate about the ECF funding for Chromebooks, not buying them until we have access to the money, I have spent a tremendous amount of money that was supposed to be reimbursed through S R three, and that's why my patience has come to an end, because our fiscal year ends June thirty, and I've got probably two hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses that I'm waiting to be reimbursed on, so, just give you an update on that, and now they won't let us apply for anything else, my first is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I think, my first request, they will not allow any additional requests to access the funds that we were told that we could have if we followed the parameters of the allowable expenses, they won't allow us to access anymore until they magically processed everyone's first go-around, and so we sit in wait, and that money expires in December of twenty twenty-four, so, there's a lot of us superintendents who are now voicing our concerns together. Uh, I'm going to give you just a little mind boggle here about increasing costs when we talk about it, if you'll look in your packet under some of the financing stuff, you'll see a fuel bill there, six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for a month, you know, we pay diesel for the buses, I I signed an activity P O today, just for activities, we we pay the fuel, but just the activities, forty-seven hundred dollars, so costs are, the the activity's contracted, I just want you to know how much bus activities cost us, plus fuel, but that fuel is our vehicle fleet and our bus fleet, and when you're looking at seventy-some, well, I guess nine months, nine times six, fifty-four thousand dollars in fuel, that's a lot of fuel, probably not to my agriculture people, but to me, that's a lot of fuel, and those are the things that we have to be, that I am trying to be so diligent budget-wise, because I don't know where this is going to stop, these were un, these were certainly unbudgeted expenses, five dollar plus diesel, um, so, we all have to be very diligent on what we're doing, because once we set a budget, there's going to tell what our surprise will be next time, sorry that took so long, that's all I got.
Thank you, uh, next we have number fifteen, executive session for personnel. Twenty minutes will be the start for personnel executive session.
I so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Gree, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education go into executive session at eight forty-four, for twenty minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel, and that the Board of Education return to open meeting at nine oh four, in the Board of Education Conference Room, the executive session is required to protect the privacy of non-elected personnel exempt under coma, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?